All right, and it looks. Looks like we're good to go.
Okay. Call to order the regular meeting of the Ria Del City Council.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good.
Yeah. Okay. Roll call, please.
I'm seventeen sixty-five. Yeah, I think we're good now, though.
Okay, well, whenever you want to do roll call, you're on.
Okay, are we ready to go? All right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Mayor Garne.
Here.
Mayor Protimlal. You.
Uh.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Um. City manager Knop.
Here.
Finance director Dillingham.
Here.
Chief of police Connor.
Here.
Community development director Colwell. Water but we superintendent Jensen.
Here.
We thought superintendent Taylor.
Here.
And city clerk is present, thank you.
Thank you very much. I will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a die with the council or staff is not intended. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs unless a binding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to three minutes. Thank you. Are there any public comments?
There are currently no hands raised.
And currently no email public comments.
Thank you. We will move on to the consent calendar. Um, on the consent calendar, if items are pulled, I'm going to then put a halt to the consent calendar, jump to item J, which is the, um, the authorization to execute the MOU because the project engineer needs to, uh, step away soon as possible. So now to the consent calendar, are there any items on the consent calendar that the council would, any council member would want to pull?
Yes.
Which one?
Two and three.
Okay. And, um, are there any staff members or public that want to pull any item from the consent calendar? Okay, hearing none. We are going to then pause the consent calendar and move on to item J, which is a special call item authorized the city man, on page thirty-three, authorizing the city manager to execute an MOU between the city of Ria Del and the county of Humboldt regarding the Monument Road storm dri, storm damage repair. Page thirty-three, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garne, members of the council. I'm just gonna, uh, do a little Zoom house cleaning, make sure that we have, uh, Tony on the line. Uh, Tony, are you on the Zoom call?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, perfect, Tony, okay. So we're, uh, uh, we'll go ahead and begin the item. The, uh, as the council is aware, back in two thousand seventeen, uh, early two thousand seventeen, we had, uh, a series of heavy rain events that was federally declared a disaster. Uh, the, uh, Monument Road, um, just to the west of town, uh, experienced a slip-out. Um, and the slip-out occurred fifty-fifty on the, uh, both the, um, I'm sorry, hang on one second. Uh, the slip-out occurred on both, uh, the, uh, county and the city, uh, areas of responsibility for Monument Road. So basically split down the middle, right on the city limits, uh, uh, of the city of Ria Del and the county of Humboldt. Uh, we did have a slip-out there, uh, on Monument Road, so, uh, again, it was, uh, declared a, uh, a federal disaster by President Trump and, uh, which kicks in some FEMA aid, uh, for this particular issue. And we have been working with the county, uh, over the past couple of years, uh, in terms of, uh, getting this, uh, project geared up. That storm event, I think, caused, uh, over three hundred similar events in, uh, county responsibility areas. Uh, so obviously the county's had a very large workload, uh, the FEMA process does take a little bit of time. Uh, but we are here today to, uh, really have the first, um, official kind of agreement between the county and the city moving forward. Uh, because it is a slip-out that occurred, uh, on both the, uh, city side and the county side. Um, ultimately, the local cost share would, uh, would be split. And so that's part of the staff report and part of what, uh, Tony, uh, can help, uh, discuss. So, uh, attached to the agenda, uh, is an agreement between the county and the city, uh, specifying the fifty-fifty local cost share, uh, for the project, um, as well as some cost estimates that Tony could go further into details, well, uh, some of the design of, of the road. And the design is definitely, it's a robust, uh, full, uh, repair of, of the road that, uh, likely will avoid any future, uh, slip-outs as this section has, in the past, uh, slipped out, uh, apparently on more than one occasion. So, uh, so Tony, if you're on, if you're still on the line, uh, uh, can you chime in and talk a little bit about, uh, the design and, and what, uh, what the community can look forward to?
Yes, so, um, back in two thousand seventeen, um, since the county had three hundred projects and city of Ria Del had zero projects, um, FEMA decided that the county should take the, uh, project that traversed the, uh, city-county jurisdictional line there. Um, so as FEMA works, FEMA, um, they, um, reimburse, um, the, the, the agency, the, for seventy-five percent of all eligible costs, then, um, CAL OES, since this was a federally declared disaster, CAL OES, state will then, uh, reimburse the agencies for seventy-five percent of the remaining, um, costs. And then, so basically what it boils down to is that the, uh, local agencies are responsible for six point two five percent of all eligible costs of the project. So we, uh, hired, um, GHD to design a soldier pile wall to support the road in that area. Um, we've got the attached, uh, cost estimate for the sixty-five percent plans. Had a grand total of, uh, two million dollars. So the, uh, county would, and city would be responsible for six, six point two five percent of, of the construction costs. But along with those costs are also consultant fees, and that's on the spreadsheet that I, uh, put together. And I tried to, uh, list all the, uh, the, uh, costs. Some of them are estimates, so plans and specifications to date, that, that's the current, uh, amount that county has spent and also GHD. I estimated another fifty percent of that value to, to get it to a hundred percent plans and specifications. That's, that's an estimate. The engineer's estimate is, uh, two million. Um, so then the ten percent contingency, that would cover any change orders, um, that happened during construction. And then, um, a fifteen percent construction management, that, that would be people out inspecting and also the management of payment to the contractor and those fees. Um, so we get to a total project cost of, uh, three million dollars, which is an estimate. Um, so seventy-five percent reimbursement, so FEMA would, uh, will pay two million, two point three million of that. Um, CAL OES, CAL OES will reimburse for five, five hundred thousand. So total reimbursement of their two point eight million, two point nine million. Um, so the remainder would be, uh, one, one, a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. That's the, the six percent remaining. So the MOU that, that county council has put together would, uh, explain that the county and the city would be responsible for fifty percent of that, six point two five percent. So as an example, I have, so city of Ria Del would be responsible for ninety-six thousand and the county would also equ, equally. So I did a little bit of a sensitivity analysis. I, I tried with a twenty percent under engineer's estimate for the project and a twenty percent over. So the under, if it's twenty percent under, then the county and city would be responsible for seventy-four thousand. And if it's twenty percent over, then we're looking at, um, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
And, and just for clarification, Tony, this is on page forty-two of your packet, that breakdown that, uh, that Mr. Segetti's talking about.
So, um, at this point, the, once, once we get, uh, the city to, um, approve the MOU, then, um, then I'll, um, run it through the, uh, county, Humboldt County Board of Supervisors for their approval and, and execution of the, uh, MOU. Any questions?
Thank you very much for that, uh, explanation, that summary. Um, council. Um, are there any questions? Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, no, like, um, I think he was, I think he's pretty well summed it up in the cost. I think we're good.
Thank you, councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Garne. Uh, Tony, a couple of questions, uh, first being, have you guys estimated the working day duration for the proposed contract?
Um, you know, I don't, I don't have that information with me, but a guess on, on this size of project probably gonna be, um, forty-five to a sixty-day, um, contract. That'd be work, working days.
Uh, that'd be awesome if it could be done in that time. I would estimate myself that it'd probably be close to twice that long, but, uh, uh, we can always hope for a quick one. Also, uh, question on page forty-three, the summary of, uh, probable construction costs. Item twenty-four is ground anchors, subhorizontal, thirty-two each. Uh, do you guys have an estimate of the length of those?
So we, we don't, so tho, those, um, so the geotech or geotechnical engineer has some, some idea on, on the length of those, those grand ankles. Those are, um, horizontal anchors that are drilled back into the bank. Um, so the, the, the drilling contractor actually, um, puts that, um, together. They'll, they'll, they'll look at the boring, the, what material's there, they'll, they'll estimate a length. And then what we, and then they'll drill them, they'll grout them. And then what we'll have them do is some proof tests. So they'll put a, they'll jack, they'll put a, a jack on those anchors, anchor cables and, uh, apply a, a load for the specifications. And if they, uh, they hold the load, then, then we accept them. And if they don't, then they have to regrout them, re-drill them, regrout them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Strawn?
Yeah, so, um, Mr. Segetti, yeah, so on the geotech report, so the, uh, there's one whaler, you think that's gonna be sufficient to stabilize that mountain there?
Yes, the, the, uh, the whaler was designed by, um, GHD. They actually have a structural engineering subcontract with, uh, um, blah, 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 can't think of the name of their subcontractor at this time. But yeah, that's what they, they, they're experts in designing these walls and the loads that, uh, they've, um, calculated. The one whaler will be sufficient to, um, resist the earth.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate your help, Tony.
You bet.
And, um, I just wonder, are, are, are they going to close the road entirely? I assume that, that, but are they gonna close it entirely? Are there gonna be hours that people can get through? Um, do you have any idea of that just at this time?
Yeah, the, the, actually, there'll be no full road closures. There'll be one lane closed. Um, that's the beauty of the soldier pile wall. It allows, um, traffic to move through while they're building, building the wall. They'll set up a temporary signal. Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure if they, if we got to that. By the time we get to the ninety-five percent for the middle, there'll be a temporary, uh, traffic signal set up. So the uphill traffic will be allowed to go and held when the downhill traffic is allowed to go.
Awesome, awesome. Yay, thank you. Um, uh, are there any public comments or, uh, questions?
Nothing received on this end.
Okay. And Rosa. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you so very much for coming and, um, and going over this with us. So.
You bet, thank, thank you.
Um, then to, is this a voting situation?
Yes, um, so we're just looking for the authorization for the city manager to execute an MOU uh, between the city of Ria Del and the county of Humboldt.
Is there a motion to authorize the city manager to execute?
So moved by Johnson.
Have a motion, is there a second?
All second.
We have a motion and a second by, uh, councilmember Strawn. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strand?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Garne?
Yes. Motion carries four zero. Thank you for being here. Tony, and now we will return to the consent calendar.
All right, thank you.
Item two of the consent calendar. Councilmember Strawn?
Yeah, so I just, uh, so the first bullet point of the, um, we're transferring funds between what, what accounts are we transferring there? The fourteen thousand.
Bullet point that says police budget needs fourteen thousand two hundred. It's transferring between regular salaries and part-time salaries.
Okay.
Or full-time permanent to part-time because we had vacancies and the police chief was utilizing temporary employment.
Great, okay. That was the only, uh, question I had on that.
And, um, item three?
Can we do, are we doing, are we still on two or are we gonna?
Oh, did, yes, did anyone else have an issue with item two?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't ask to pull it because she pulled it, but, um, my question goes down to the one on the sewer department with the fifty-six thousand dollars for electricity. Uh, that was, that was, you know, that was over our budget. Our, our budget, it was around a hundred and one thousand and I, I saw on the, um, there was an estimation when we were doing our other budget that it was gonna be about a hundred and thirty. What was the reason for the over, uh?
The, the actual cost for a hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
What, what caused it to go up by the fifty-six, whatever it went on, whatever went over the fifty-six thousand, what?
So, so for the previous year, the actual costs were about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. But when the budget was done, the budget was only slightly over a hundred thousand. So, so the increase between last year's actual and this year's actual was, is the difference between a hundred and thirty-eight and a hundred and fifty-eight, which I think was eight percent when I calculated it. Um, so part of it is there, I'm, I can't answer to why it was budgeted the way it was because I wasn't here when I did that bud, when that budget was prepared. And then when I did the budget for twenty twenty-one, I do believe I estimated low because I just had a hard time comprehending that it would cost that much, but apparently it does.
Well, that's, that's partly my question is, I, I see in this year's budget, we're, we're at a hundred and thirty-something. We're kinda back to what the other couple of years, uh, were estimating. And what I, what I'm guessing is that we're gonna, we need to do something, yeah, we're budgeted at a hundred and thirty-six thousand this year. Um, was proposed. We're, we're still probably gonna be, if there's, unless, and there could be another PG&E and increase, we're gonna be short a substantial amount probably at the end of, uh, the fiscal two, twenty twenty-one. So I don't know if we need to put that in somewhere to amend our budget or, or do we just wait till the year end and?
I, I can specifically talk about that when I do mid-year.
Okay, that would, that would be good. So that's, that's really my only question.
And I am planning for the next council meeting to bring the year-end, um, report for the overall budget for last year. And so that'll be another opportunity to, to talk about how things look.
Okay, cuz I'm not, um, cuz we should, you know, just knowing PG, uh, PG&E was what they're doing, uh, they're gonna have an increase and it's generally in the five percent range. On top of whatever.
I received, oh, sorry, I received a notice in the, in the mail today that said that they were selling one of their main offices and reducing their rates.
Okay. I believe that. I'll accept it, I mean, I do. I believe they'll sell their office, I don't believe they're. I'm, I'm good with that. So, so we'll wait till the next, when you do your midterm or.
Thank you, does any, thanks Frank. Uh, does anyone else have any questions regarding item two? Um, which is the year-end budget? Are there any public comments, um, or are hands raised?
Are currently no hands raised.
Thank you.
No public comment.
Thank you. So we will then move on to item three.
Need a motion?
Well, I, I was gonna do them both at the same time, but is there a motion to do, um, to, uh, approve resolution number fourteen sixty-six dash twenty twenty for the year-end budget amendments?
Uh, Mayor Garne, I don't believe that we've approved items one and four.
Oh, we haven't, you're right, you're right. We, we went away from the, um, from the consent calendar, absolutely. So I will then go to item three and I'll do them all four together. Thank you, uh, councilmember Johnson. Councilwoman Strawn, would you care to speak to item three?
Yeah, so this is the, um, was, came up because of the graffiti on the buildings at the ballpark at the school. And I see that it, it's been painted and so Kyle, so the city painted it?
Correct.
Although your ending statement here is that it's not the city's responsibility or?
Difference of facilities of which, um, the city does not appear to really own, uh, anything over on the parcel, including that parcel. Um, and thus the responsibility ultimately falls to the, uh, to the school district. Now staff did, was repairing graffiti or abating graffiti on another city structure that had a similar paint scheme. And, uh, and so we went ahead and, and abated the graffiti on, on, uh, on that property.
So has, has our city attorney looked at this, um, agreement here?
Um, yeah, yeah.
When I look at this agreement, it, it looks like to me the city got a grant to build those facilities down there. And yet then the city doesn't wanna take care of any of these structures and they're wanting the school to take care of them. I, I don't know if we.
I would say this is a, a separate issue perhaps that we need to agendize.
Well, that's why.
If we're, if we're speaking directly to graffiti, then yes, but I think if we're starting to talk structures and who belongs to what, I don't know, um, you can maybe speak to that, Kyle, whether or not we're veering off or, because I, I have the same questions. I called and talked to the city manager earlier today. Um, but it was, uh, it was a, it wasn't subject matter exactly. So I'm not sure how that falls, Kyle, um.
Yeah, I, I think it's a very, it's a convoluted and long process, not made easy by the language in the agreement. That's, uh, not always very clear, um, in particular in the draft that has been circulating around. Um, so if it was, so if the council wants to delve further into, uh, into this agreement, we can certainly agendize it at, uh, at a future meeting.
That's why I asked to have it agendized because I want to have it looked at. I think it's time we do iron this out with the school. Uh, the only people who are losing here are our children. And, uh, I think the city needs to step up and take responsibility for the facilities we placed there. And, uh, so I would definitely like to have this agendized and looked at.
Um, okay, I will come back to that right after I have a motion to do the four, um, the consent calendar. And then as soon as I, uh, have the motion for the consent calendar and we resolve that, then I will, um, uh, ask about the, uh, having that placed on the agenda. So are there any other questions regarding the graffiti maintenance at the school property? From council? From council? I'm gonna say no.
What are you, are you asking for a motion for all four items or just?
No, right now I'm asking you if there's, if you have any question or statement regarding the graffiti on the school property.
My only statement would be that I'm, I'm glad that we, you know, took care of it, that we didn't turn it into something bigger than it needed to be to get, to get the graffiti covered up and.
Absolutely.
That seems to help graffiti is if you get it, the sooner you get it gone, the less likely the, the culprits start to put it up because they like, it's a status symbol, they tag, call it tagging, they, they, they live for this, man, my, my tag's on the building down there. So the sooner we get that done, the better it is to alleviate reoccurrence of it.
Absolutely. Councilmember Johnson, did you have a comment?
My only comment is I would move for approval of the consent calendar.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strand?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Garndes?
Yes, motion carries to accept the consent calendar four zero. And is there a consensus that the Davis Street property, school, rather, the school property issue, the joint agreement needs to be agendized?
I can, I concur to that.
Yeah, Councilmember Strong, we are, no, Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, and so I agree too, so we have a consensus, city manager to agendize that item. And now we will move, we'll move on to the staff reports, page thirty-one. City manager?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Garndes, members of the council. So we do just want to recognize that Mayor Garndes was sworn in back on October sixteenth as the president of the, for the League of California Cities Redwood Empire Division. So that's an honor, I'm not aware of any other council member being, being honored with. So certainly a big congratulations to the mayor on that, on that appointment.
Thank you.
The, obviously with COVID, it'll be a different kind of presidency, at least in the, you know, the first, in the next couple of months. But we're certainly looking forward to, to that. And in terms of, we have a contractor coming in for landscape maintenance on the meeting islands, hopefully will be completed before the end of this month. We've been working with the city engineer on future grant opportunities for the city and how we can file for different grants, including some energy reliability grants for city hall and other facilities. We have been working on the local road safety planning process to gear it up to be able to make safety applications for street grants in the future. And we've also just been working on, in the police department, adding facilities for our new CSO position, which we have extended and offer for the CSO position currently in background. And discussions also with the county in terms of vehicle upfitting for new police vehicles. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the council. One more thing though, which is that the council should have been emailed the police department update for, for this meeting. So in your email box, if you haven't already read it, would be the update that wasn't able to make it into this particular highlight, but with that, I'll go ahead and turn it back to the council for any additional comments or questions.
Thank you, city manager. Councilmember Strong?
Yeah, so, um, the landscaping maintenance, so we do have a contract already with somebody or you're still looking at bids or?
Um, yeah, no, we have a, a contract moving forward.
Great. And I had some questions, maybe is Kevin on the line?
No, I don't believe so.
I didn't hear him respond when his name was called.
Okay. I had some questions on the new manufactured homes for the permitting. Are those replacement or are those additional?
One is the replacement and the other one is new.
And for the new one, I know that we passed, you know, something came before us about putting in manufactured homes and things. Did we talk about hookups and, you know, sewer hookups and water hookups? Are they hooking into what's already there? Do you remember that discussion?
Um, one of them, the one on Ogle Avenue, they have water and sewer hookups on site. The other one is going at the end of Bluff Place and it is, they will require to hook up to water and sewer, but utilities are in the street, so it's not a problem. And I will mention that these are both very nice homes, they're Palm Harbor and they're high quality.
Okay, yeah, great, great. I was just, I just couldn't remember what we decided on the hookups for that. Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garndes. I want to congratulate you on your presidency for the league and.
Thank you.
You deal for the city of Riedel. It's unprecedented that any council member would step up to that responsibility and thank you.
Thank you. And, um, Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, I got a, a couple of questions. First, I'd, I'd like to echo Mr. Johnson's congratulations and for all the same reasons that it is, it's good that we have someone in a good position to be able to have contact with particularly local officials or in state and government during this time. Thank you for taking that effort.
Sure.
A couple of questions I had was one on the, the medium repair, is, is this, is this like, they're gonna fix this one right now or are we gonna still do like a, looking to do like a contract thing or something or like an ongoing maintenance?
Yeah, so this is a, just a one-off to get the medians back into a manageable shape. I'm working with a local group who I think can take on the ongoing maintenance so that we aren't having to bring in an outside crew to, to do that maintenance. There's quite a bit of work that needs to be done right now though. And so I think in the long run, if we engage the, the local group to do kind of an ongoing long-term agreement to do the maintenance at a, at a relatively low, low and affordable cost, there'll be a good, a good benefit towards keeping the landscaping in good shape moving forward without getting to the condition that it's in right now.
Great, that's, that sounds like a good plan. My other question was on the, the staff car, are, are we, are we short purchasing a police vehicle or was, was that in, that was in the budget or we haven't, just haven't got it done or?
Yeah, the council budgeted money for, for two new police vehicles. The process has been delayed, you know, probably in part due to, to COVID and just supply issues. Ordering the vehicles, we're getting very close to bringing an item back to the council for approval on that. But once the order is placed, it's probably gonna, we're looking at, you know, potentially six months before anything is delivered. So there's kind of an extended period where we just can't access new vehicles at this point in time. So that being said, we're adding officers and we're adding hours. And, and we did, in the, in the two SUVs that we do have are approaching an age where, you know, they're gonna start experiencing more mechanical failures. So it seemed like a reasonable thing to do to go ahead and for the time being, reassign the admin car over to the police department. We will have to figure out in the long term whether that vehicle returns back to the admin fleet or if that remains with the police department. It's effectively this year, we've added two positions, plus we also have a part-time officer. So there's just more of a, a demand for, for the vehicles and I don't know, Jeff, Jeff's on the line, so if the chief has any additional comments, really leave it to him.
So one of the things that pushed us is we had one of our, one of the SUVs in the shop for about a week and a half and we can run okay with four vehicles, but three makes it extremely difficult. The admin cars used primarily by myself and majority of the miles I put on it are to and from my house and the, the ultimate gets about three times the gas mileage that a patrol car does, so it's much more economically efficient for me to use that vehicle than, than one of the patrol cars. That was another driving force. Other than that, I don't know, seemed like a good idea to me and I'm pretty happy with the way that car's turned out.
I, I think it's, it's a good idea to, I know one time we talked about getting rid of it, but, and then I, and I anticipate going forward that there's gonna be a lot more Zoom meetings even when COVID, whenever it does end, that I think a lot of, lot of things that we had to travel to, or not me so much, but I know the, the, the antenna of it was that that was to save people traveling to, uh, remote places to do city business. So that may, that may decrease and it may be a good, it may be a good solution for the chief, for a chief's car. But I know that buying a lot of different stuff and then I've heard the news tonight, there's, they're anticipating this winter, there's gonna be a, another one of these, they call it a twin-demic or something, that things are hard to come by. I know you can't buy a Chromebook till next February, you can't. But if, one thing we need to think about going forward, if, if we want to keep our rotation going for adding police vehicles, maybe as soon as we get these under control and ordered that we address that in our budget system and look to order something else with the lag time, we would be into the next budget cycle or almost through it, that we get some more police vehicles on order so that we'll get them in a, kind of get them on, as we need them, is, uh, looking forward. So that's just a suggestion. Other than that, that's all I have for the city staff.
Thank you. Are there any, any public comments, any hands raised?
Currently there are no hands raised.
And no email comment.
Thank you. And we will close out the staff reports and we will move on to the public hearing for the unmet transit needs, page sixty-seven. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor Garndes, members of the council. So, so every year we have the unmet transit needs hearing, the recommendation for the council is to open the public hearing, to receive input on any unmet, unmet transit needs in the community and then close the meeting. And then we would be issuing a letter to the Hamilton County Association of Governments to relay those comments made during the public hearings related to these unmet transit needs. So my understanding is we do have a, a couple of commenters here this evening who want to raise some issues or concerns regarding unmet transit needs. And I'll just see if also the city clerk has anything else to add to this particular item.
No, this is just our annual, our annual required hearing and same as previous years.
Normally there's a, a couple of, a few people who have comments or want to address some unmet needs, so if those are present or present online or present on the phone, I would say that we should go to them, please.
And so Rosa, again, can you raise, uh, put the banner on the screen? So in order to raise your hand to, to comment on the Zoom call, you would dial star nine if you're calling in on your phone and then you'll also have to unmute yourself if you do that by pressing star six. So, so we'll give folks just a few seconds here to go ahead and, and dial those commands. Again, star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself and commence the public hearing.
Is there a council member who want to say anything while we're waiting?
Yes.
Go ahead. Councilmember Strong?
So, um, am I right, we have four stops in Riedel, is that correct? There's the two on Wildwood, the one by Shell and then the one on the corner of Painter and Wildwood. And then there's two, there's one down on the corner of Rigby and Davis. And then I see is, I see there is a, it looks like a bus stop right in front of Danko. Is that also a bus stop or is that just a bench?
Yeah, the one at, at the Danko side is, is a bus stop, it was added as part of their requirements for the project.
So there's four, is that correct then in Riedel?
Uh, there's also the bus that runs down to Garberville and so there's an additional, I think, two stops that are kind of on the on-ramps, north and south, where people can board those separate buses to, again, to the Garberville area.
Is that, that's not though through the transit system, is it?
Uh, no, it is, it's just that, it's just a line that really goes, it's kind of, I believe it's like an express line that goes down to Garberville and stops just in a couple places on the highway.
Okay.
And I think there might be, I, my count is actually six, two on, two going north on, on Wildwood, one at, in front of city hall and one down by, I think Painter, then on Wildwood going south, then the one across from the senior complex. And if there's a new one at the Danko property, the River Bluff cottages, and then down at Davis and Rigby.
Yeah.
So that would be six actually.
Okay. So my question on the Danko one, are the tenants there, are, have they been given, you know, with these, at the meetings that we have at HCOG, they talk about the transit and the students have been supplied with like a low cost or sometimes even free tickets to ride the bus? Are, are, are tenants at Danko, have they been given that opportunity? Is that something that we could look into for them or, do you know?
Yeah, I'm not aware, I don't know if any other members of staff is aware if Danko tenants are provided those type of vouchers or anything like that.
I wonder if we could ask for that or, uh, just some form of assistance through DHHS or, because they, they might need some assistance with that and if there's any programs out there, I certainly think they should qualify for that and I'd like, I'd like that looked into if we could. And also I'm not sure, but I do, I do know on the corner of Rigby and Davis, there's always people with bicycles that are getting on, so I want to be sure that there are bike racks on those buses. Uh, so they're available for them to um. I know that's also been a discussion at HCOG, are bike racks on the buses so that the bikes aren't inside the bus but are actually able to be put on the outside? So more people will be able to sit. So those two issues I would like brought up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are good, good, good issues. Um, anyone else? Uh, Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, I can't think of any uh I meant, the only other question would be uh as we talked about it, have we fulfilled all our requirements on the handicap access to the bus from the library?
Um, yeah, so the the uh I wouldn't say that we have covered everything there. Um, however, we have covered everything that we can get grant funded. So if the council recalls, it's the path of travel from the nearest bus stop to uh to the library. Um, so uh you know, we did, redid the sidewalks basically between City Hall and the library. Um, so those now meet ADA. Uh, one section that was highlighted but was not required in the documents um for the city to remedy at this time uh was really the uh the sidewalk uh in front of Memorial Park uh in the trees there on Wildwood Avenue right across City Hall. So that sidewalk area remains uh not strictly uh ADA compliant. However, what I would add to that is the uh, you know, the the order that came through um for the uh ADA compliance was mostly fo- was focused on the library itself. And so what the city's done in this case is, you know, take taking care of the ADA issues where we can, utilizing grant funding to to address it. Unfortunately, the area right across from City Hall was not in the scope of our ATP project, so we weren't able to wrap um that up into there. Uh, but certainly as we move forward, we'll be looking for other opportunities to upgrade that um section as well.
So it doesn't sound like this is something that falls under those transit needs.
I think ADA is is always, uh, there's a lot of work all throughout town and and all throughout many of the communities in Hubble County that are ADA related. Um, you know, so it doesn't, I I don't think it hurts to, you know, add that as a comment to the uh to the unmet transit needs.
Okay, I like, I'm just, that's just a suggestion is for that to make it so they can get uh because as I see some of the stuff around our town, the the streets, as they get rougher in in some areas, it makes it tougher for the handicap. You know, the the big, it was a big improvement over on the yellow and in in uh scenic. I mean, that was, I think, a really great improvement, but I'd like, if we can get some more addressed, it'd be great.
Yeah, the ATP project is not over with yet, so um we are gonna have REO Construction come back and do some additional sidewalk repairs on uh on Davis Street to help uh repair some of the damaged sections there.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Johnson, did you have any?
Nothing to add, Mayor Garance.
Thank you. Uh, now, um, I think we've had a sufficient time. Are there any hands raised or emails?
No emails.
Thank you.
And no hand.
Okay.
And let's uh let's give this one other try. So it's star nine to uh to raise your hand in the comment section and then Karen, do you have the the name, uh, the first name of the individual who was uh going to attend?
No, no, the email that I received was from um Jason Chan. He was going to address any questions anyone had. He's in the, um, yeah.
Okay.
I am on that.
Thank you.
So let me know when you want to move forward, city manager.
So and I I I'm looking right now and I don't see any pants raised, so I think uh I think there is no public comment.
Okay. Thank you. Then we will close the unmet transit needs public hearing. Now we will move on to council reports. Councilmember Johnson?
Uh, nothing to report, Mayor Garance.
Thank you. Councilmember Strong?
Yeah, so just a little reversing back to the unmet transit needs that
Oh, sure.
The uh city brings in a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars is what the budget was for uh this year. That was um made up and looked at prior to COVID and uh they're anticipating that to drop, although we don't have the exact numbers, but that is the funds that come into the city of Riedel that is used to repair our roads and um we appreciate uh that coming from the county and helping out our city. Okay, end of them uh reporting. So last meeting, we talked about um a phone conversation with Danko Project. Um, Mr. Knott forwarded me a um email that uh was unproductive. Uh, we were both online. There was no meeting on a Thursday. Uh, so I did go down and uh just knock on the door of the of uh the cottages and met Destiny down there, who is the new manager. Had a discussion with her. I'm still very concerned regarding um that project. Uh, there have been no community meetings of any sort because of COVID. Um, so these tenants haven't had any like AA or NA meetings. They've uh had none of the um uh meetings that I went to that we had at the fire hall where they would have helpers come in to help them with light cooking or cleaning. Uh, they've had nothing, uh, no assistance. And of course, the reasoning is COVID, but that is now opening up. And I'm hoping that DHHS is gonna step up here and help these tenants that have been placed here. It's um very concerning to me that uh they've just kind of been moved in and then left to uh care for themselves and, you know, when the whole point was we were supposed to be helping them in collaboration with DHHS, with the city and with Danko. This was supposed to be a collaborative effort and I don't see that happening. So I'm very concerned about that. I'm still uh thinking a letter should be sent definitely to DHHS and um to Danko, copies to Danko regarding that uh we need to see this happening. We need to see this moving forward. Uh, these tenants need assistance and we want to see to it that they're getting what they need. Um, also, there was a uh article put out Lost Coast Output. I love Lost Coast Outpost, I believe it was on Friday, the sixteenth. Um, it's about Arcata um uh Measures B and then for the county Measure I that's put on the ballots is regarding low income housing. It's an article that's very interesting that I'm hoping every city council member in Riedel reads. It's about Article thirty-four of the Constitution and how permission from the voters is supposed to be sought before any building of affordable housing is put in, supposed to be voted on. That certainly is not what happened at the Danko. Um, I know that we sought um legal counsel by Russ. I'm not sure what happened there and maybe he can address this. Uh, but I think we really need to be careful what we're doing and definitely look into uh any future um projects or things that uh may be on hanging out there. Also, uh, I was at the school today and spoke with Angela, the um principal.
Superintendent.
Yes, superintendent, thank you. And she was talking about Halloween and I believe uh Chief Connors, uh she spoke with you today. And I thought maybe you're gonna bring that up, but um uh the kids are going to be, uh, you know, wearing their Halloween costumes and uh they were gonna do a little parade and they're gonna be coming by City Hall. And I thought it might be a great idea if we could get a table out there and candy or something for the kids. Um, if we wear rubber gloves or do something that's going to keep everybody safe, uh, it might be a great outreach for our city.
Well, to to speak to that, um, uh, Councilmember Strong, there's a I guess you call them a hack, I don't know, Hack Online, the Pinterest thing, you know, and they made a tube and a tube went down, a kid did this, made a tube that went down the railing of their house. And they they made the tube all the way down the railing and then they slid the candy bars down the tube from the top of the porch down to the to the bottom so that the recipient could get the uh get the candy and you're still uh having social distancing at as it should be. So if if we do do something like that, that is a uh an idea, an idea that would, I think, would work well. So um now, uh, where are we? Councilmember uh, Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, uh, we're doing staff um council reports.
Correct.
Um, I I did have, I had an HWMA meeting and we uh we went over the same of the same stuff that we that I keep bringing up is on particularly on CRV uh that's that's pretty much a done issue in Hubble County for a while. There, the HWMA is trying to figure out a way to make that work, but they've decertified. So if you, if you're collecting cans and bottles, you're gonna have them in your uh possession for a long time until you can find your way to Creston City, but uh what she, what uh Jill told us uh Thursday was that they they pay a dollar sixty-five per pound for uh cans and they sell those for forty cents a pound. And that's the only money they get. They don't get any money from the state. They get what they get from selling the cans. The other thing they pay a dollar, they would have paid a dollar twenty-eight a pound for bottles and they would have sold them for eight cents a pound. It's like sixteen to one. So I don't see how anybody can uh make it, make money doing that. So um, but what they are, we're looking to do is into address at the next meeting, what it would cost um the the HWMA to add to um tipping fees or to your your cost to get rid of your solid waste in order to set up some kind of a of a location to uh to take the CRV and and continue to lose. They they lose three quarters of a million dollars, which you are as a as a garbage, if you have garbage collection, you're subsidizing that and the cost of your solid waste garbage to pay for the cleaning up of the recycled um goods, which was they they again tell us in the eighties when this was put in place, the reason that they passed the CRV thing was to get people to not litter on the highways. And so now that's getting turned around and people aren't out picking up the cans like they used to and um, we're gonna start seeing more litter. So I guess stay tuned, but um just to let you know that if you're holding out for when you can go turn these in, you're gonna hold out a long time. You can't just throw them in your recycle bin and you don't get anything for them, but they they get recycled. And uh you can feel a lot better about yourself, I guess. That's uh, that's the idea. They don't end up in the on the somewhere else.
In the ocean, right?
Well, I I I still have an issue with making a lot of to outlaw straws, but uh apparently right now, that's not a big issue with everything else.
Thank you. Um, was that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Um I thought I had something else, but I think I, I think I'm good. I have, I have HW or RCA Thursday. We're gonna talk about power and all of that, so.
Okay. Okay, then. Um, so um, I'll just go back just one more time to see to the city manager, was there anything? Any hands or any? Did anyone come in while we were having this conversation?
No hands have been raised.
Mayor Garance?
Yes.
Mayor Garance, as a point of order, we do need to have a motion on the unmet transit needs.
Oh, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Um, we need to
Thank you.
Have a motion to oh, what is that motion? Is that action to um direct staff to send a letter to County Association of Governments relaying the comments made during the po- public hearing regarding unmet transit needs. Is there a motion to have that letter sent?
So moved by Johnson.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No, second, yeah.
They have a motion and a second by Councilmember Wilson. Um, roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strand?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes. Uh, motion carries four zero. Thank you, city clerk, for clear um pointing that out to me. All right. Well, I think that then brings us to the end of our uh regular meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved by Johnson.
We have a motion. Sure, I'll, do we have a second? Uh, so moved. See you in two weeks on November third. Meeting adjourned.
Adjourned.
Good night, folks.
Um, good night.
I have a question for Kyle.